Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Board's meeting on Wednesday, July twenty second, two thousand and twenty. My name is Donald Campbell, I'm the Chair of this board, and before we start our meeting, I'd like to ask every member to please introduce themselves, starting with you, Bruce.
Hi, Bruce Lee Clark.
Good evening, Gene Connor.
Good evening, this is Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening, this is Jim Carroll.
Hi, Barrett Aaron.
Stuart.
Uh, Stu Hurd, Town Manager.
Great, we also have on the line with us Nancy Lively, who is the Secretary for this meeting. And of course, Catamont TV, who is, who is airing this. Now, I have to read this statement as I do before every meeting. Bear with me, please. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott and pursuant to addendum six, to executive order one dash twenty Act ninety-two, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend this meeting, however, the public may view it on Cat TV and call in at one six four six five five eight eight six five six. And when you do that, you'll use the uh meeting ID of eight seven zero two eight six zero one four seven zero. I'll put that up on the screen in just a minute. Technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at a time and place to be determined. All votes that are not unanimous will be done with a roll call vote in accordance with law. So first order of business is for me to put up the call-in information. The first half of our meeting is um different from the second half. The second half of the meeting is public comment, and we will welcome your calls after we have the first section. So when we get to that time, again, the dial-in number will be six four six five five eight eight six five six. And the meeting ID is eight seven zero two eight six zero one four seven zero. Have to press the pound sign when prompted, so you press the pound sign twice and you end up going into the waiting room where you'll stay on hold until I enter you into the meeting and calls will be entered into the meeting in the order that they are received. So again, we won't be accepting public comment until after this first section of this meeting. Um, but we uh, we look forward to hearing from you then if you have something to say. First, uh, we need to recognize the passing of our friend, dear friend in many cases, and fellow board member Bill Scully. Worked very hard for Bennington and will be sorely missed. Our hearts go out to his family, and we will plan to say a few more words about him at our next regularly scheduled meeting. This portion of our meeting is a report on the evaluation of public officers. Until such time as our community adopts an alternative mechanism for civilian review of police department internal investigations, such as a uh, citizens advisory committee. Act fifty-six provides that the town manager or members of the select board perform this function. We're charged with reviewing allegations of substantial misconduct and alleged unprofessional conduct by police officers. Because the select board recognizes that investigations of specific allegations of illegal conduct by an officer must be treated as confidential under Vermont law, we have already reviewed the complaint before us tonight in executive session. Our process tonight is not an ordinary select board meeting. What we're doing is, is more closely compared to an appeals court, in which we're considering findings of the police, uh, the Chief of Police, and agreeing or disagreeing with those findings. So based largely on advice from Captain Julie Scrivner of the Vermont State Police and our Town Council, our interim process for reviewing the complaint may be summarized as follows. First, when a complaint is filed, the police chief writes a report addressing the complaint. Second, the select board acting as the citizen review board reviews the report and relevant documents, videos, et cetera. Third, the board decides whether to accept the chief's report. Four, if the board identifies potential illegal contact, conduct by a particular officer, all materials are kept confidential while an investigation takes place. Five, if the board decides that the evidence may support a finding of illegal conduct by a particular officer, the board may vote to forward the report to the state's attorney or attorney general for further review. And six, if the report indicates no cause for criminal charges or policy, policy violation, police policy violations, and the board finds no basis for overturning the police chief's conclusions, the report and all supporting materials are made public. So board, you have all read the complaint and the report many times over and seen relevant body camera video of the events. Um, because of the ongoing national dialogue on racism and its particular presence in policing, and because we know that racial bias exists to varying degrees in our community, in our police force and in ourselves, I know that each of you has taken this complaint extremely seriously. The process of police reform that our community has undertaken is more important now than ever, and I expect our community will be stronger because of it. But tonight, we're only considering one thing. Do you accept the Chief of Police's report on the complaints filed on May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty, first by Liz Fiskoff and then by Joel Fowler, uh, Joel Fowler and Cassandra Keating? If not, how would you like to proceed? So I'm going to look to the board at this point for a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I have a, a motion to propose.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Regarding the complaints filed against various members of the Bennington Police Department by Joel Fowler and Cassandra Keating, after reading the report of the complaints prepared by the complainants and responses by the Bennington Police Department, and after reviewing the video footage from various dash and body cameras, the Bennington Select Board finds that they are in concurrence with the judgment of the Chief of Police regarding complaints one through five and eight, that the complaints were unfounded. Regarding complaints six and seven, they were not properly presented by appropriate individuals and therefore they were not uh, investigated or considered. Should this motion pass, the full record including any video viewed by the select board in this matter will be released by, uh, really, these to the public. I, I, that's what I would move.
Okay. So we have a motion, uh, do we have a second on that motion? Uh, Nancy Lively, I'm not sure if you were able to see that, but Gene Connor and Gene, Jeannie Jenkins, uh, both offered the second that.
Yes, I did see that, thank you.
Any discussion? Alright, if there's no discussion, I would ask everybody to please unmute themselves. And I would ask you all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, we have, we have agreed to that. Are there any further, uh, is there any further business on this subject before I proceed with the?
I have a second motion.
Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
Okay. Regarding the complaints against various members of the Bennington Police Department, while the select board sitting as an advisory council of citizens found that the complaints did not identify criminal acts or civil wrongs or violations of our departmental policy, the board also wishes to express its concerns regarding several of the practices depicted in the complaints filed. These include speaking to a complainant about a serious matter while a young child was present and could overhear. Addressing matters of great concern in a very public location, and proactive contact with landlords regarding prospective tenants. We believe that though these are not violations of departmental policy and that officers acted with courtesy, we also believe that better judgment could have been used in conducting investigations. The practice of proactive contact with landlords and sharing information not available through a standard FOIA request should be discontinued immediately unless doing so would place an individual in imminent danger. We request that the department examines its practices and protocols in light of these community expectations and standards. So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Um, most of us have not heard that before, um, and probably just about all of us, Bruce, I, given that it's somewhat nuanced, I wonder if I could ask you to read it one more time, please?
Absolutely. Regarding the complaints against various members of the Bennington Police Department, while the select board sitting as an, the advisory council of citizens found that the complaints did not identify criminal acts or civil wrongs or violations of departmental policy, the board also wishes to express its concerns regarding several of the practices depicted in the complaints filed. These include speaking to a complainant about a serious matter while a young child was present and could overhear. Addressing matters of great concern in a very public location. And proactive contact with landlords regarding prospective tenants. We believe that though these are not violations of departmental policy and that officers acted with courtesy, we also believe that better judgment could have been used in conducting investigations. The practice of proactive contact with landlords and sharing information not available through a standard uh, Freedom of Information Act request should be discontinued immediately unless doing so would place an individual in imminent danger. We request that the department examine its practices and protocols in light of these community expectations and standards.
Okay. Thank you for doing that a second time. Uh, any discussion? Alright, well, I think Bruce, you've done a nice job of capturing the sentiments of this entire board, but we'll see in just a minute. Uh, I'm gonna call the vote here and ask everybody to please unmute themselves. And all in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, so that motion passes as well. Thank you for that. Is there any further action that we need to take on this before I release some parts of this? No. Any further comment? Okay, so we uh, have, have taken the liberty, I have taken the liberty of working with the um, with Cat TV, our contractor, uh, to work on bringing some of the body camera video available to you. Uh, because there have already been requests for the body camera video and because the state police recommend releasing the video, especially if, if some of the community feels low levels of trust in either the select board or the advisory board. And frankly, because it's now public information, I would ask the board, I guess I'm gonna ask you informally, uh, or would you be in favor of releasing the video right now, uh, in this live stream?
Yes.
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 And Donald, may I ask that, uh, with respect to each and every one of the, uh, video incidents, that it's paired with, um, what is it, the complaint or, what's the phrase that I'm looking for?
Yeah, so the, the video that
The incident.
Well, I've, I've worked with, uh, Cat TV to uh, string these together, again, in confidence, uh, in a confidential manner, string these together so that they can be full screen and viewed full resolution, uh, if this motion passed, because as a result of passing this motion, we, we will now be releasing the full police report, whatever it is, forty pages or fifty pages, the full police report and the, the body camera videos, uh, that exist. This is all, will all now be public information. The report's very nuanced, and I would certainly encourage anybody to read the details, uh, before it's off.
Donald, just, just to be clear, um,
Jim, I'm answering your question here. We're, we're not, it's all strung together, and each, each video segment has a, has a title on it, which gives the actual number of the, it's not, doesn't correlate to the numbers that we're, we are used to from the complaint. But it does have a complaint number, which is the official ID of that video segment. And so each, each of the four segments will, are available. We'll show them in just a minute. The first one takes place in front of a laundromat in the, uh, in the Hannaford parking lot. And that one has a number of expletives deleted, uh, by Cat TV because we are in, in family time here. Um, the, the next one takes place in the parking lot of the middle school when an officer approached the complainant. And that, that one has been pixelated. That one has been intentionally, um, altered so that you can't see, you can't make out faces in that because there is a minor present in that video uh, sitting in the back of the car, and so we have pixelated that whole video. You can still hear
And that's a form, that's the former middle school.
The for, yes, the former middle school, right. And then, um, the, so the first one relates to complaint number three, the second one relates to complaint number four, and then the last two video clips relate to complaint number eight. So the first part of that is dashboard camera video, which has no sound. And so, anyone who's watching it, don't be, don't be alarmed if you find there's no sound, because the dash cam video doesn't do sound. Uh, and then the, the last of the four clips is the body camera video from the officer who made the arrest after the, um, after the police chase. Okay? So, uh, Mike Cutler at Cat TV, if you are ready, I would ask you to go ahead and queue this up. And then after this, we will, uh, we will close this section of the meeting. Uh, we'll have generalized public comment, uh, in which people will be able to offer comments if they have them on other matters, and then we will close the meeting. So Mike Cutler, are you on here?
Yes, we will queue it up.
What's up? Parked in the fire lane. We're unloaded. You're unloaded? Unloaded the laundry. Okay. We're on? Unloading? Yeah, I am. Unloading the laundry? Cause you guys, you can't park here. We're not parking, we're unloading. I understand you're telling me you're unloading? You can park in a parking spot right there. How are we supposed to carry bags in there, bro? Like you really being like You carry bags back and forth. I'm not being an asshole, people complained about this, okay? I'm not yelling at you. I'm yelling because you're, you're annoying now, bro. How am I annoying you? Because you, you, you just, bro, you're spinning. I got your camera spinning and it came right here. But give my ticket and you can get the [__] out my face. I was just at Walmart. I'm here now. It's not annoying. Bozo, bro. Give me this bullshit ticket for unloading laundry. I'm not giving you a bullshit ticket. Can't you carry your [__] laundry over there and back? You can walk back and forth and make multiple trips. You get killed with this [__] dude. [__] asshole, bro. Give me a ticket, bullshit ticket, bro. It's [__] bullshit. It's not bullshit. How the [__] are we supposed to unload? It's called unloading. You park? It's called unloading. I'm trying to explain this to you. I'm gonna kill [__] you gotta say no more, bro. Alright. Yup. Look, no problem with parking right there and walking back and forth. I can't hear you over at that distance. Okay?
Unloading and you're harassing us.
I'm not harassing anyone.
Every single day you guys are giving us tickets.
I have not given you guys a ticket for parking until right now. [__] unloading. Okay. [__] unload somebody over there. Alright. [__] annoying, bro. You and your partners, all y'all. Keep [__] following me, bro. I have no idea what you're talking. Keep [__] following me, what the [__] I'm talking about?
You know what we're talking about.
I do not.
Dan, go inside.
All these tickets gonna be bullshit 'cause y'all stalking me now. Lower your voice.
It's 'cause you're black, clearly.
Has nothing
Every day y'all give him a ticket.
Has nothing to do with that.
Every single day you guys give him a ticket. It's harassment at this point.
Because you guys are parked in a no parking zone. That is why. You're [__] stalking, man. I am not stalking anyone. I gave you a ticket for no license because of a loud exhaust. No, they did not. Here's a twenty-five dollar parking ticket, okay?
Let me ask you something. Why didn't you give me a parking ticket if I was parked there and you only gave the black man a ticket?
I gave him a ticket, I gave the person that's parked over there a ticket as well, okay? You can go and file a complaint at the bank if you please.
In fifteen more minutes and then harass us again?
If you're not parked here and I drive through here and don't see you, I'm not giving you a ticket. Okay, I am trying to explain this all to you. I am driving through here, patrolling the area to make sure no one's parking in no parking lot. No, I had no idea you guys were here until I pulled up right here. Okay, no, I did not. I stopped them, I was there for a complaint. I'm trying to explain this to you guys. I'm trying to explain this, but you are all yelling, okay? So, you can go file a complaint against the ticket guy, it's completely fine. Last time you explained to me, I listened. But now you keep giving me tickets, I don't got nothing to hear from you, bro. I have just explained this to you, okay? Do you have any questions about the ticket? Yes, and I told you, I, I'm not being annoying, I'm doing my job, is what I'm doing, okay? Okay. Alright, that's fine. You're not in a no parking zone. Ah, here we go. Just because I'm doing the same thing with you.
I haven't taken any pictures of you.
You're taking pictures and follow me, sir.
I don't have one.
Proof that you are doing that. So once, I'm just gonna tell you one time, stop harassing me. I haven't committed no crime, I haven't done anything.
Sir, I've never taken a picture of you.
Alright, so, so what you was gonna say?
The, all I've heard is people wanna hurt you.
Nobody wants to hurt me.
That's all I wanna make sure that there's nothing that happens here that's violent, you getting hurt, somebody getting hurt, that's all.
Listen.
That's all I wanted to talk to you about.
I understand that.
That's it.
But you don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, if that's the case.
Whatever media you're reading or whatever you're doing, it's wrong.
If I'm wrong, sir, then I'm wrong, and I apologize for being wrong.
Alright.
But I just want, I just don't want anybody getting hurt here.
How is somebody gonna get hurt? I just told you, nobody's gonna get hurt.
That's why I'm talking to you, though. It's because I wanna make sure that you don't get hurt, I wanna make sure nobody else gets hurt in the community, that's all. Because I've heard that people wanna hurt you, that's all.
And where you heard that from?
People down in Albany and Troy. That's all I've, I'm not, I'm not gonna discuss that.
You have to, you're talking about me being hurt?
I don't have to discuss that.
You just told me that people is telling you that basically my life is in danger.
I'm not saying your life.
You just said hurt, danger, don't matter.
I don't know how, I don't know how that's gonna be.
Alright, I'm gonna use your words. You just said that people told you that I could get hurt.
I've heard that information, yes.
Okay, and I'm asking you, because it's, it's, but hold on, it's pertaining to me and my safety. You see that kid in the back? I have a kid with me twenty-four seven. That's my daughter. So if you're telling me I'm gonna get hurt and you don't know who, you can't tell me who it's coming from.
I, I can't.
Alright, so then why would you tell me that my, I'm, I'll be, I'll be
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm, that's why I'm asking you if it's true or if it's not true.
Why? It was, it not, yeah, this is your personal interview or something?
No, it's not an interview, sir.
So you're asking me if it's true that somebody's out to hurt me, but you're telling me somebody told you that. So whoever told you that, you were supposed to ask them, how do they know that?
But, 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 that's what I'm saying. I don't know if it's true or not.
But where you getting it from?
That, that's all, that's why I'm trying to see to you if it's true or not, that's all, sir.
But where's it, where you getting it from?
I'm not gonna discuss that. So if it's
Discussing that with somebody else that's telling you that I could be getting hurt.
It is, sir, I'm just wanting to make sure nobody's hurt, that's all. Okay?
But how are you gonna make sure that if you can't even tell me where your information is coming from?
Sir, you're in zero trouble or anything. I just want
I know I'm in zero trouble.
So that's all, if you said you're good, then we're good.
Listen.
Alright.
Hold on, listen, watch this.
You reported, right?
Yeah, there's, there's
He just told me Yeah, I caught everything. He just told me somebody in New York, in Troy.
We're good.
Why is he telling that information that's not
And now I'm asking where's information coming from?
That's why I'm asking him if it's true or not, because I, because I don't know if it's true or not. Alright, I'm done with the conversation.
It's not true for you to take that information and spread it.
I'm not following you, not following you. Have a good day.
How do you know that he's been at my house though?
It's not true. Have a good day. I'm not spreading rumors. Have a good day.
DeWell?
Joel.
Joel, okay. You have anything on you you need to know about? Okay, separate your feet for me.
You never supposed to be chasing me.
Okay, you're not supposed to be running, I know that.
Bro, I wasn't gonna run. I, I heard you siren at the last minute.
Okay. Go ahead to my car, please. M three sixty Bennington, one mail ninety-five.
M three six eight Bennington.
Here, look up, I'll take your helmet off for you. Is it tied? No? I'll let you duck out of it. There you go. Go ahead and hop in.
Three six eight, arriving. Unpleasant. M three four six Bennington, you can show me arriving.